This is the October 28th meeting of the City of Ithaca Planning and Development Board. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Welcome to everyone in the audience and to our board members. Let's go around and introduce ourselves. Lisa, can we start with you?
Lisa Nicholas, Director of Planning and Development and Staff to the Board.
Andy Rollman, Member of the Board.
Jenny Secleff, Member of the Board.
Max Pfeffer, Board Member.
Nikki Sarah, Environmental Landscape Planner and Staff to the Board.
Emily Petrina, Chair of the Board.
Sam Jacobson, Planner and Staff to the Board.
Great, thank you. We have emergency exits at the front of the room and the rear where you entered. In case of an emergency evacuation, we are to take one of two exits and wait at the trees on the same side of the street on South Cayuga and Green Street. We do not cross Green Street unless absolutely necessary. Those with restricted mobility in the event of an emergency, it's best to move to one of the stairwells and first responders will arrive to aid you. In the event of other emergencies, you'll be notified at that time. We want everyone to be aware of their surroundings and offer to help when it's not to your own detriment as you're your own best advocate. Women's restrooms are located on the first and third floors, men's restrooms on the second and fourth floors. We have a busy agenda tonight and expect to be here until quite late. We want to attend to all items on the agenda in a thorough and deliberate manner. And to that end, I urge the public, our volunteer board members and applicants to keep comments and discussion as concise and relevant as possible. We will try to adhere to the proposed time limits on the agenda. Nikki, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are. So 445 East State will not be coming tonight, the sign package. Most likely they'll be coming in December if the amendments for the sign ordinance pass because then they can come for one stop, hopefully for approval and waiver.
Great. Okay, we do have minutes to approve tonight, August 5th, August 26th, and the September 23rd minutes. Can I have someone move the approval? Andy moves, second, Jenny seconds. Any discussion or changes to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. Let's do a show of hand votes. We can approve them all in one block. So that is unanimous, approved. We'll do public comment now. This is a time for the public to speak about any item for which there's not a public hearing tonight. And we don't have any public hearings for the projects that we are reviewing tonight. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? No? Sam, do we have anyone in the waiting room? Okay. Then we can move right into reviewing projects. Our first project tonight is site plan review for the Breeze Apartments at 121 and 125 Lake Street. And we are looking at potential site plan changes tonight. Great.
Good evening.
Hi, Eric. Is Julia there as well?
She's coming in.
She's coming in.
Hopefully.
Okay, we'll give her a minute. She comes.
Good evening. I'm sorry.
Hi, Julia. Yes, we can hear you now. We have you and Eric. So we have your materials. If you'd like to give us a presentation and highlight the changes, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. We're here tonight to present a few site plan modifications related to the east retaining wall and the adjacent elements. This is the same wall we were here for a few months ago. Eric Reynolds with SLVR who's here with us will talk you, will walk you through the details of the proposed changes. Eric, please, whenever you're ready.
Thanks, Julia. Hello again, board members. Good to see you again. We'll pull up a presentation here for the Breeze. So as Julia mentioned, we're here presenting some changes to the site plan that was previously approved most recently in March. What we've got on the screen here is the side by side, but I will zoom in and talk through the specifics here. So we have a retaining wall as well as an exposed bedrock section along the eastern portion of the site, which I am highlighting here just to get everyone oriented. East is actually page up, north is to the left, south is to the right. So we'll start and we'll take this in, I guess, a couple of different components. We'll start on the south side, which is page right. The previously approved plan, you can see in blue here highlighted, this was the section of retaining wall along the east side. The rear, I guess, of the site, which is to the north, this section of blue here, as well as in pink, is the previously approved dumpster enclosure. And just to remind everyone, these walls were approved as cast-in-place concrete walls that were ranging in heights, but relatively tall at around 12 feet high. As we got into things a little bit further and started to plan the specific excavation and the contractors, subcontractors got involved, there was some further investigation on the installation of these retaining walls, which has thought, which has made us think a little bit about their locations specifically related to the property line. So on this lower plan, we're generally doing the same type of thing, but we've made some minor adjustments to stay within our property boundaries. The background for that is that anything off of our property has been cleaned up by the DEC previously, but is not exactly under our project. And we would like to stay within the confines of our project. So any excavation or construction outside of our property lines just will introduce more procedure. And so what we have done on the southern end of the site, again, page right, we have modified the layout slightly, angled the wall and relocated the transformer so that we can maintain all of our construction activities within our site boundaries, which were cleaned up, as you know, as part of this project. So that's sort of the front of the site, Lake Street on the right side here. This is the southern end. Looking at the other end of the site, the same relative problem exists at this pinch point corner here. If I pan up back to the top, you can see the backside of what was the dumpster enclosure is relatively close to the property line. So again, we are proposing a change here to shift the wall slightly off of the property line, relocate the dumpster so that all of our construction activities remain in our property lines where we know, where we have a little bit more control and understanding of what the cleanup was done very recently. Just to look at what those walls will look like and change. I mean, dimensionally, they're very much the same. I did mention previously that we had a cast-in-place concrete wall approved. What we are proposing here this evening is actually a segmented block wall. I think personally, this is something that's a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, but it does have a different look, which we'll show the board this evening. But here are the two sections that we looked at. This is not really very useful to you as it stands here. So what we've also done is provided the revised elevations of this wall. So this is an elevation of the eastern property line. So this would be looking up the hill from the building would be standing behind you in these elevations. So here is the section towards the southern end of the site. These are the segmented block walls that you see here. Just due to the nature that these are slightly wider than a cast-in-place concrete wall, this particular section is slightly taller. So 555 is the elevation here. It was previously 552. So this represents about a three-foot change in height. The, like I said, the gravity blocks themselves are just a little bit larger, which means they kind of move in geometry. And it required this section of wall to be a little bit taller. And then as we move to the back of the site, you can see here, this wall is relatively similar. There were sections here by moving the wall and changing things over here. There were some overall height differences. You can see sort of our high points along the new segmented block retaining wall, 546 and 545. Previously, we had 547. So generally, this section is pretty similar, a little bit of reduction in height here. And what you do see is a little bit more of a lengthening on this part. This is just due to the wall manufacturer looking at this. And then there is more of a step-down approach. So there's a little bit of a widening of it, but generally overall, it's slightly shorter on this section. As I mentioned, we're also changing the material. So previously approved on the left would be, would have been a cast-in-place wall, a little bit thinner in sort of width, which was advantageous at the time, but aesthetically, it's a little bit, in my opinion, a little bit worse of a look. So what we are proposing is more like what you see on the right, not something unfamiliar to Ithaca and its topography. So we have a segmented block wall that will look more like this, as you see here, with a cap on the top. And then finally, in our conversations initially with staff, they just asked us to clarify that with these changes, there would be no changes to the overall landscape approach with the dumpster relocation. We did have a number of trees along the backside of the site at the northern end. We do not anticipate the changes here modifying much. We would shift those trees around a little bit. As you can see here, we would relocate this one tree that was currently, that was previously proposed in the footprint of the dumpster, but overall, the same number of plantings. And additionally, with any, with any work up here, we plan to relocate some of the plantings down to the southern end where the transformer went. So these were transformer screening plantings. As required, they would be relocated down to the southern end to shield the transformer. So overall, we feel that this approach is inconsistent with what we had originally had approved. The project is going very well. If anyone has been able to get up the hill, things are progressing. And it's very exciting. And we're hopeful to present these changes to the board this evening and get approval and get some of these final site pieces buttoned up and in place. And with that, I think, Julia, is there anything else that we wanted to mention or talk through?
Sorry, I was muted. No, I think this was great. Thank you, Eric, for presenting.
Great, thank you both.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's go around for board comments. Andy, can I start with you, please?
Sure, yeah, thank you, Eric and Julia. I guess for me, you know, reading your letter, Julia, and you sort of presented this as the, this new block wall is visually more appealing. But, you know, first of all, looking at the building under construction, I think it's really looking great. It's very industrial looking, and I think it looks great next to the stack. And it's a very clean building. And I also went up and looked at your outlook project where initially you had some of those concrete block, you know, walls that kind of look like Legos. And you've now transitioned those to concrete, which I think, board form concrete, which I think looks really clean and very industrial. So for me, I think the concrete is more visually appealing. And I don't like the idea of moving the transformer closer to the front door of the project. I think, you know, having it in the back, behind landscape, you know, in the parking lot is better than having it, you know, next to the entry drive. So I think the trash moving is fine. It seems to still work. And, you know, relocating the tree, but I don't support transitioning from the poured-in-place concrete to the block.
Thank you. Andy, Jenny?
Thank you, Julia and Eric. I was gonna raise something similar about the block, just having also looked at the outlook and just wondering if it's the same style that you guys had, that is at, you can still see some visible at the outlook. So curious if that's the same block. I just noticed, I'm sure you've accounted for this, but it, the emergency turnaround, just curious if that has had any changes. You know, I saw it labeled on one of the visualizations, but not the other. And then I wanted to ask about the path that I think walks out to the outlook that you guys are putting in place. And just making sure that the dumpster, I think now the dumpster is like adjacent to that path. And so just really being thoughtful that that is obscure, especially if that's sort of the public benefit part of this project, is like opening up a visualization and a walking path to look over the falls. Hence the name, the Outlook. That was it for me.
Great. Thank you, Jenny. Max?
The Breeze Apartments, sorry. The Outlook is a different building? Yeah. Yeah, okay. Long day.
Yeah, thanks. I just had a couple of questions. One is with the changing configuration of the wall in South by Lake Street, does that affect the entry and exit of vehicles and so forth? Including the ability for people to see around the corner there to oncoming traffic in Lake Street, just as a question. Wasn't clear to me how that would affect that. And then I guess if you could speak to, coming back to the wall that Andy raised and Jenny as well, if you could speak a little bit about the difference in, not in the appearance of the two, but also the performance as a retaining wall. I was just kind of curious about if there's any considerations there that we should be aware of.
Okay, Julia and Eric, if you want to field those questions, go for it.
Sure thing. To go over these, I'm gonna pull this back up here. So maybe to hit on some of the easy ones, the emergency access in the rear of the site would still be maintained. I know that there's a lot of line work on this drawing, but generally speaking, this area that I'm trying to, I guess I could do this. This area in here is the emergency turnaround. And it remains, you know, generally the same size that it was previously. We have run these calculations previously, and we are relocating the dumpster to outside of the original turning radius. If there needed to be a follow-up, we could, we could provide that. But I'm confident that this would still function as it is because the new dumpster is going outside of the original paved turnaround area. And then additionally, it's kind of cut off from this plan. But again, to do my best ability to sketch here, Lake Street is kind of out here, let's say. So if you're staging as a vehicle trying to navigate the turn, you would be out past the retaining wall into the public right of way, past the property line. So this would have, you know, the reconfiguration of this wall or the previous version of it would not have been an issue where you're queuing up in front of the sidewalk to make the turn, either in or out. To go over maybe some of the other questions, I think the, from an engineering standpoint and a longevity, the concrete retaining wall was engineered and designed to do what it is intended to do. And similarly, the segmented block retaining wall, same thing. So there's full engineered shop drawings that could be provided if necessary. So very confident on the alternate approach that we're proposing this evening from a longevity standpoint. And then, you know, additionally, I think maybe to, to clarify with Andy, I think our original version is, is very much this version of a concrete wall, not necessarily like the board-formed version that you're referencing. And I think just from a construction intensity standpoint and a ease of construction, there is some value to a retaining wall that is like this versus a poured-in-place concrete wall. If there are things like cracks and things that happen in the concrete, which concrete will always crack, not necessarily a concern from a structural standpoint, but that could introduce just other aesthetic features that you're not gonna get in something like this, which is more of a small pieces segmented, put together. I'm thinking, did I miss any of the questions there? I'm trying to remember everything.
I think there was another question about the dumpster enclosure and how visually screened it would still be from the overlook path.
Yes, so that's, that's a fair point. The dumpster enclosure is getting a bit closer. We would still envision plantings and trees sort of framing your walk. If we can see on here, the path would have, is in the arrow that I just drew. So you are walking, you know, 15 feet closer maybe to the, to the dumpster than previously. But we would still plan to put plantings on there. And I think it would be fully enclosed. So it's not, you know, it's not like a dumpster just sitting there on a pad. It would be fully enclosed, consistent with the previous surround that we had before, which was like a wood surround with gates. And if the, if that wasn't sort of sufficient, we could talk about additional screening with plantings or something like that. But as it stands right now, you are walking a bit closer to it, but generally still screened with the plantings that we do have currently, as well as the enclosure itself.
Okay. And could you zoom into the transformer location for us as well?
Ah, yes.
I had trouble seeing that, too.
So the new transformer is not near the entry. So the new transformer location proposed is about here. So the main building entry is over here. There is a vehicular entry here. But I think we're basically taking it from one side of the building-ish to another side of the building-ish. In my opinion, it's not necessarily gonna be, you know, any more front and center. There's still plantings in front of it like there would have been over here. And, you know, if you look from Lake Street, you'd be able to see it in both instances, but it's generally shielded. It's, it's probably, I don't know, what is this dimension? 35 or 40 feet from Lake Street proper? So just to maybe clear it up, it's, the transformer did move, but it is not at the main building entrance or really that much closer to Lake Street.
Great, okay. Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, Eric, could you pull up the rendering of the front of the building? Maybe that would help.
Yeah. So the transformer will be sort of over here. This is a, this is a rendering that we did previously. You know, you can't see it, but the other rendering, or I'm sorry, the other transformer location is kind of right over here. You would have seen that in front of this is the wall that was previously proposed. So I'm doing my best to, to guide you all here. But yes, the transformer will be here, perhaps a little bit more front and center, but we are envisioning taller plantings in front of it. And this is, to back up maybe a little bit and provide some additional feedback, we have gone back and forth with NISAG a lot on this site. There are some, there were some easements attempted to get, to put the transformer in certain locations. And this was really the only place that landed as the NISAG-approved and city-approved transformer location. So as much as that is a conversation that we're having tonight, I would say that the transformer relocation is not a result of the wall change. The transformer relocation is part of the equation and the wall changed also. The transformer relocation is more so the coordination with NISAG and the neighbors and the city for its new location towards the bottom of the page, if you will.
Okay, great. Thank you for that additional context. So I have, let's, let's break the issues down. We have the wall, size, material, slightly different locations. We have the dumpster location and screening. We have the transformer location. I think those are all of our issues. So just for the board to talk about each of these, I heard a desire to go back to concrete-formed wall. Can I get your thoughts on the materiality, Jenny and Max?
I mean, I agree that concrete-formed wall looks, looks more consistent with the rest of the building. I mean, I wonder if even like the brick, the style of brick that's on the rendering that you guys showed up, you know, if something like that would also be more consistent. I think it just has a very different feel. But I'm not necessarily a hard no on what's proposed, as long as it's not the big, big chunky ones that are at the overlook because I don't, those are very aesthetically attractive.
Okay, Max?
Yeah, I, I don't feel so strongly about the, about the concrete wall. I, I could accept the segmented wall. I'm willing to listen to everyone.
Okay, thank you. I haven't really weighed in on it. But I, I kind of feel how you do, Jenny. I think I would prefer the formed concrete. But because they're a smaller block and it's not just CMU or a split face or something, it's a little bit more of a landscape block. I think I would be okay with it. I think we would need a submittal of the exact product that you're proposing and size on it, manufacture, all that, for the record, if, if we decide to go that way. But it sounds like we're sort of split on this. Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Eric, could I just ask, how tall it is? I guess my, my concern too with the block is what it looks like at Lake Street? Because there's no like, you know, cap that you put on those. So what does it look like facing Lake Street and how tall is it there? At one elevation, it looked like it was getting up to 20 feet, which was my concern as well, but.
I think 15 is the tallest section. It was previously 13. We have an image that is more coming down the hill from Lake Street. And I could show you, if you are, if you're coming, let me see if I can describe this. So if you're coming up Lake Street from, you know, more of like the western side, like this view is shown, you will see the face of the retaining wall back here, right? As you're coming down the hill from Lake Street, this direction, there is too much foliage and existing grade change. You're not gonna perceive the, the hill or the retaining wall, really. So as you come up this direction from Lake Street, sort of up the hill with Arden on your right, you will sort of like look past and see. Now, the other thing to note is that Lake Street is about six feet higher than the section cuts in the elevations that you're seeing. So the reality is like the perception of the, the wall is, let's say it's 15 feet high or something in that range. You're standing probably six feet higher than that just due to the nature that you come into the site here. Got a lot of lines on my page now. You come into the site and you're kind of going down a hill into the site. So these topo lines, this 536 right here, up at the road, you're 541, 542. And then as you, you know, obviously as you come down, this is down the hill. But there is that to be noted, Nikki, that the, the height of the wall is 15 feet, as you noted. But there are, you know, there's some built-in grade that's happening on the street as it is. And as a pedestrian or as a vehicle passing by, you are already five feet or six feet up from the bottom of where that retaining wall is.
Thank you.
So the perceived impact will be a little bit less. That would have been the case with either wall type. That's not, that, that hasn't really changed with the, with what we've got in front of you this evening.
So it seems like the height is not so much of an issue. I wonder about how that edge looks because the formed wall edge seems very clean. And so I'm not quite sure how stepped wall edge will work or look. I think I can visualize it, but it's hard to know exactly.
Yeah, the, the wall does not end in an edge, these types of walls. They kind of usually like taper down. So as you, and then grade sort of like gets put on top of them. And there's a, there's a block that as, you know, the, the top block is a little bit different than the ones below it. It has actually like a top, if you will. So as you're, as you are looking at it from Lake Street, you're going to be seeing the first, you know, the first couple of feet of it is going to only be a couple of feet tall. And it will sort of gradually step up rather than sort of, you know, more abruptly starting tall like a concrete wall would. That is why it got a little bit wider and longer, because it actually steps down. You don't just stop those blocks.
And are they solid blocks? Sorry to interrupt. Are they solid blocks or are they more like a masonry unit that has an open cell?
No, they are solid blocks because these are gravity, these are gravity retaining walls. So they are solid blocks. They interlock with each other and are basically just their own heaviness is what helps to retain the earth. So here's sort of a view. I know this, this is kind of oblique because you're looking at it at an angle. But, you know, you will see it step up like you can see here versus the previous concrete wall, which was just basically like a vertical edge starting and stopping at the left and right sides. So it does sort of like step up and down unlike the concrete wall would have.
Okay, thank you. Andy?
Yeah, I guess for me, the, you know, the exposing of, you know, the gorge stone is so beautiful. And, you know, I ride by and walk by the site a lot. And it's just, you know, I've been waiting for the concrete walls to come in because I think it'll be such a beautiful contrast to the natural, you know, stone. And I'm afraid that these blocks kind of have a fake look. And I think especially next to the gorge, and this is really a gateway to the gorge. So for me, I just, you know, think the concrete is the right way to go.
Okay. Thank you for that. Now that we have a little more from Eric and from Andy, Max and Jenny, how do you feel about the concrete and the blocks? Same or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with them. I think it'd be good to take a look at them and make sure that, you know, visually they do look okay.
Okay.
That's like a good, good suggestion. So if we could see, see the product.
Right, actually see the product.
Yeah.
Okay, let's hold on that and talk about the dumpster location and the screening. Any further thoughts on that? I feel fine with where it is. It is closer to the trail. But we could talk about extra plantings if we want. There is a tree between the trail and the wooden enclosure.
It's a red bud.
It's a red bud.
Just to point out, yes.
Tell me more about that. It's not very screening. They're spindly, okay. Is there, Eric, is there the potential to have like a lower level below that red bud? Grasses, some additional plantings, like a second?
I think we could absolutely, you know, we could absolutely do that. Whether, whatever the, we could talk with our landscape group and see what makes sense there, whether it's something like low grasses or arborvitae's or something like that. We could absolutely do that.
Okay. Anybody have an objection to the dumpster? Andy?
Yeah, I think if, if the team went back to the concrete wall and it was more rectilinear and, and the turns were more orthogonal rather than curved, I think you could still accommodate the dumpster where it was. Because Jenny, I think you do bring up a good point. And I don't think that's gonna be a nice thing to walk by. And if this is really, again, a feature of the gorge and people are gonna be able to experience it in a whole new way, you don't want to walk by a dumpster on the way. You don't want to walk by a dumpster on the way.
Okay, Jenny and Max, on that agreed with Andy or how do you feel?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, um, is, can you guys remind me of the, the concrete walls? The reason that you're moving away from that is because of?
They're more construction intensive and uh, they required additional excavation beyond sort of where we were previously prepared to do excavation. And there is potential for um, anything we do off property is going to trigger DEC oversight. And so that would like severely impact our timeline most likely. And like, I'm not really prepared to talk about what it might mean, but we just know that as our consultant came on board CNS companies, they mentioned that, you know, that's really not under this, anything outside of our property lines, not under this purview that they're currently doing. So it would open a can of worms that we frankly don't really want to open. So we want to, we want to maintain all excavation on our own property.
So let's tease out the, the difference between the material and the shape, the new location and shape of the walls. Um, are they both optional or does the new location and shape of the walls necessitate the block?
Uh, they're a little bit, I guess they're a little bit intertwined. We would, we would need to look a little bit closer, but I think the walls want to move and change shape regardless.
Right.
So yeah, I guess that's, I, I hope that answers your question.
It does, because I heard Andy say you prefer the orthogonal location of the old walls to keep the dumpster back. But I think it may not be possible to stay on the property bounds. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused because you know, if that, if that were really, you know, the, the impetus for this, you know, why, why wasn't that presented initially? The, the letter you wrote, you know, described this as an aesthetic choice, not a technical issue.
Yeah, I think they're, I mean, they're definitely intertwined. I think, I guess from our project's perspective, we thought that, you know, we and you would appreciate this look more. And so if we had thought otherwise, we probably wouldn't have put that in there. Um, the background for the segmented retaining wall was an option that is less construction intensive that our internal team thought was also more aesthetically pleasing. Um, you know, and part of the sort of sausage making, if you will, is that we made that, we introduced those walls during construction. So the process with CNS and with all of the subcontractors and, and figuring it out um, was not quite as normal as our normal design and entitlement process might have been. So it just, the red flag wasn't raised for the construction intensity and construction logistics when we previously came to the board in March.
Right, okay. So I think I would, I don't hear enough of a consensus tonight to vote on this change. I wonder if we can see you next month with, you know, um, the actual block, um, a spec, if you have a sample. Um, and also taking a look at if the new proposed location and size to be pulled away from the property line could be done in formed concrete. Cause I feel like that is actually more what we're leaning towards and it could be a compromise. Like it's the new location, but it's the old material. Um, so if it's possible for you to come back with that next month, both. So that we have both, a better understanding of both, um, I think we could be prepared to vote on that. I think then the dumpster location is kind of tied to the wall. Um, I'm hearing um, mostly positive feedback on it, but a harder look at that, that we'd like it not next to the trail. I think if the wall necessitates it there, we can work with you on plantings, but it'd be better if it wasn't close to the trail. And then the last thing is the transformer location. Um, I know NiSEG is hard to work with and for me, that location is fine. Maybe we look at some taller plantings around that as well. Can we go back to board members on, on that location? Andy?
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, a new landscape plan, I think.
To the west.
Yeah, to hide the transformer.
Okay, Jenny?
Yeah, that's fine.
And Max?
With, with others are saying as well.
Okay, so Lisa, Nikki, anything else you want to add to this?
Well, um, yeah, I just have one thing. Um, should the dumpster be there in addition to landscaping? I don't believe yet we have seen, have we seen details of what the dumpster enclosure is going to be?
I don't believe so.
That was in our original package.
Right, but that usually comes later, but there's a lot of choices that could make it more pleasant.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So there's some really nice dumpster enclosures around town and some not nice ones, but it's possible to build one that isn't, it is. And also then the other question is, do you have to have an exterior dumpster? Could you bring it into the uh, building?
Okay. So hopefully that is enough feedback for you. Um, if we can see sort of a little more development on all these areas, um, I feel like we'd be prepared to vote next month on it. Um, super. Thank you, Eric and Julia. Um, we can also give you good feedback at PRC next month. If you come to that meeting, um, to get prepared for hopefully approval in November. So, okay. Thank you very much for the material tonight and we will see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Um, I think I'm staying, right? Uh, yeah, so we have the citizen, um, up next at 602 West Buffalo. Thank you for staying on Julia. And tonight, this is a presentation. So to give the board a little bit of background, this project was approved. Final site plan approval was given, um, but it is, we are revisiting it completely as a new project because the site plan approval has expired. Am I that right? So there was a negative declaration for Seeker, um, which carries through. There's not an expiration on that. But we should look at their presentation through the eyes of, do we need to reopen the Seeker to do um, another declaration? Did I miss anything?
Nope, no, but it'd be amended.
An amended neg deck.
We needed to, yeah, if you chose to do that.
Okay. Um, Julia, who else is from your team for the citizen tonight?
We have Bear Smith with Holt Architects and he'll be making the presentation for us tonight. Hi Bear, thank you for coming.
Of course. Uh, thank you guys. Awesome. Thank you guys for having us. Um, so yeah, just to kind of recap, um, our goal, so time has elapsed since the previous approval. And there are some key elements that have adjusted from that previous approval to now. Um, the main driving factor was that the floodplains had changed. So previously the project wasn't in the floodplain. Obviously FEMA went through with DEC and updated the maps and now the project finds itself in a uh, designated zone. And so those items needed to be addressed. So many of the changes that you're going to see tonight are associated with those elements. And that's the driving factor behind these changes. Um, additionally, something that I think is worth noting, um, is that under the previous approval, the project was intended to be a market rate project. At this point, the project has pivoted and it is uh, aiming for affordable housing. And so that's another um, aspect to this that we think is very beneficial to both the project and the community. That could uh, in our eyes is a, is a net positive for the community as a whole. So that being the case, I will go ahead and share my screen. And so I will be bouncing back and forth a little bit between what was previously shared to what we currently have. Um, and I'll try to be very specific about when I'm showing you which, uh, so then that way we can keep it very clear and concise. So the rendering that you're seeing on screen was the previous project when it had, had reached final approval. The project was a five-story building, um, podium style construction, four stories of wood construction over a, um, a non-combustible base. And it, at that point housed uh, 80 units. Um, and so again, as we needed to adjust the floodplain, what that is essentially needed to happen was we needed to raise this upper floors to create additional space on the first floor. So we could raise as many of the ground floor functions as we needed to meet both the residential requirements for floodplain and then also the commercial retail space requirements as well. So to address that item, the project had elected to raise that, but as a part of it, we recognized that we were going to create a zoning issue if we had maintained the same number of stories. So to ensure that this project stayed zoning compliant and also to try to hit some of the target goals with the affordable housing, the top floor was eliminated from this project, reducing it down from 80 units to 59 units. As a part of that, you will also notice that we try to keep the exterior aesthetic between the two buildings as identical as possible. Window locations were adjusted simply due to change, we needed to make some adjustments to the units to reach the affordable uh, requirements through HCR with the state. And so as a part of that, the aesthetic has stayed the same, but we had to shift some window location. So as you're kind of comparing and contrasting, you'll notice those two elements. Between the two uh, projects, you'll notice that there's this key feature on the corner of being able to kind of clip the corner and then some seating along the front. This was a highly discussed item during the previous approval and we felt that it was very important to maintain that same uh, identity along between the two. And so a big portion of what you're going to see as we move into the next one, next slide. This again is the previous design that you're looking at here. You were able to see some seating along the sidewalk. The building is set back to be able to achieve this. So it's found on the public right of way and the sidewalk portion is the public uh, portion of the right of way. Clip the corner coming on around to an entry for the residential portion of the building. With the floodplain requirements, we needed to elevate approximately four feet. The flood, uh, the base flood elevation is about two feet above where the floor plane was previously. And then we need to have an additional two feet of freeboard. So to be able to achieve that, we kept the same kind of arrangement, seating along the uh, front, clipping the corner, having this bypass underneath. And then we just had to add a couple of stairs here along the front for the primary entry. There was an element too for accessibility, which we'll get to here in a moment, um, when I get to the views for that. But again, between the two, you notice that the finishes are all identical. We still have the vertical solar shades. Um, the intent is to keep the same mural items that were there previously. Um, the only thing that's really different is we got rid of the green color predominantly because these are floodplain resistive materials. It could be painted, but painting block is one of those things where it's going to be maintenance issue long-term. So it was one of the things at this point we pulled back, but if the board feels otherwise, we can explore how we might be able to address that. A couple of other items that I think is worth noting with this project is here's a neighborhood plan that we had a development, developed for the uh, affordable application through uh, HCR. You'll notice that we are in the floodplain, but I think this is a good representation to just remind us how many services are available in the area between the schools, the hospitals, the parks, grocery stores. It's a really prime location for affordable housing and I think it makes a wonderful spot for this project to achieve that. Going into some of the site plan items, the site plan for all intents and purposes is nearly identical to what we previously had approved. We have a fire apparatus lane with an easement agreement through uh, the neighboring parcel back here. We have some underbuilding parking along the uh, west side of the property. We did have to provide a little bit of an elevated stair and electric room to just meet some of the floodplain requirements in the back here. And then we have the main portion of the ground floor at that front corner along Meadow and Buffalo Street. Again, having the entries coming right along with some seating for the retail and then the entry over here. You'll notice that there is a bump up that occurs back here. And when we get to the floor plans, we'll discuss that a little bit more. That's to provide accessibility into the building to be able to get up to the slightly elevated ground level for the residential portion and then also get up through the building as well. Um, this is one of those tricky parts with, when you have a slightly elevated uh, floor plate in a building, you're going to have to have a front back elevator that chews up a lot of circulation. And that was the need for why we had to do this little bump up. So it does provide accessible access along Buffalo Street here and then also nice and neatly tucked over, tucked over by the accessible parking spaces for the project. Um, moving on to the floor plan, I do want to hop over to the previous floor plan real quick. You'll notice that we did have two retail spaces. Most of the residential portion was along here and then we had the underbuilding parking. All the elements are roughly in the same location. The big difference that you'll see when we go to the current plan is we combined that retail space into one. The main reason for this was if we treated those retail spaces as two separate entities, then they would need to have different floodproofing or they would be treated separately as occupancies. And they would have to meet all the floodplain proofing requirements within the elevated um, um, exit out. Because we do intend to dry floodproof this area to be able to maintain ground level access along that street front. We felt that was very vital and important along that corridor to try to make sure that the retail portion didn't feel isolated from this um, sidewalk or the street. Um, but otherwise you'll see here with the accessible entrance here, coming in one side or the other to that front back elevator to be able to facilitate getting up through the building and also getting to the ground level functions for the residential portion. And then just continuing right on along, you'll notice the elevations again, very much similar. One is the items to note is that we did raise a significant portion of the glazing along Meadow Street for the retail portion. And this is simply due to try and mitigate as much floodproofing that is needed for the project. If you bring that glazing down, you have to be able to make sure it can um, prevent water infiltration, which gets very expensive. So bringing those sills up, having the seating along there will kind of create that um, that transition. And then we can minimize our floodproofing of openings down right to the two uh, entry doors along that side. And I think that is, um, I think that is it for the presentation portion. Our questions are really to the board for this evening would be one of schedule, um, because we do recognize that this is needing to come back into modified approval or brand new approval. Um, so we want to be thoughtful because we have submitted for funding this round. And so we want to try to get this information to the state as soon as possible for their consideration of part of the uh, application process. And then, um, Julia, I am spacing on the second question. Um, there was one more we were supposed to ask.
I think it was, sorry, thank you Bear. Uh, what I, I, what I, what I have in my mind is also the schedule wise, um, question.
Oh, the, the, the seeker item was the other portion.
Seeker.
Yeah, yep, seeker was the other item. We, we have done our absolute due diligence to try to minimize any impact to it from our vantage point, because we kept the site elements nearly identical and all, all aspects of it. And since there's a lower unit count, we think that that actually is a, um, a positive consideration towards the previous seeker because we did not decrease the size of the stormwater retention that is going underneath the building. We kept those things sized as if it was the 80 units still.
Okay, great.
That will conclude.
Thank you Bear, thank you Julia. Um, I will come back to those two questions on the amended seeker neg deck and also the schedule. But let's start off with board questions and reactions first. Max, can I start with you this time, please?
Um, thank you for that presentation. It was one of my questions is if this kind of stays within the ca- same footprint and so forth of the previous building. And so that uh, seems to be important to me in terms of moving this forward, especially with respect to seeker. Um, I had a question about the retail space. Well, how, what size is that going to be? And is it realistic to think that a retail, you'd find a retail occupant that would uh, occupy that size of a uh, space?
Great question. Um, I do not have the number offhand. I know that uh, oh, let me do some quick math here. We got, I, I would say continue asking questions and I'll get back to you on that one in like five seconds.
That was all I had.
In the agenda, it says 23,000 square feet of retail space.
Thank you.
That's big, yeah. Um, okay, Jenny?
Thanks. I mean, I, uh, my first comment is that you're missing a lot of potholes in the renderings of that intersection. I was like, what's, what street is that? Um, it looks very beautiful. Um, I, um, I was curious about any indoor bike storage. I know you sort of mentioned exterior bike storage. Um, I think particularly we've, you know, I've, I feel like I've raised this a lot and sometimes I've been um, a little more willing to understand why indoor bike storage isn't needed, especially for places that are like on the top of the hill. But this is in prime biking zone. And so I would love to hear more about indoor bike storage.
We, we do have bike storage under the building, uh, included in that parking zone. We don't have it enclosed and a big part, portion to that is with EV char- or charging of electric bikes in particular. The batteries aren't as well regulated and there are fire concerns with those. Um, so we do. So we do have covered uh parking for the bikes, but just not enclosed.
Okay, I guess I, you know, it'd be interesting if you could take a look. I hear you on the EV, but even just for regular bicycles, you know, I think we hear most frequently from transportation partners that the need is for safe and secure. You know, enclosed bike spaces to prevent against theft. So just, you know, just if you're able to take another look and see what you could potentially come up with, I'd be curious. I, can you explain in a little more plain language, the accessibility? I got a little bit lost as you were kind of pointing. I think even if you just sort of say it again, I'll be able to follow along a little more clearly.
Yep, absolutely. So for accessibility, um, we have our grade plane of what's the sidewalk elevation. And for residential floodproofing, we have to get to whatever the required elevation is. In this situation, it's about four feet above that grade plane. So we gotta tran- uh make that transfer four feet up. And so it creates a situation where with an elevator, you're only going a half story. So you can't enter and exit on the same side of the elevator. You have to be able to do it on opposite sides to be able to do half story transitions. So to do that, we have this um off Buffalo Street here, so everything's been rotated north is a page uh west. So you have a sidewalk that's going to be coming along into this lower lobby. There is a um a set of stairs to get to this elevated portion of the floor, first floor for the residential. And this elevator will also transition through that um uh half story transition. It does make kind of a nice uh transition for the upper floors because if you're entering on one side, then you'll be able to immediately exit onto the other side for all the remaining upper floors.
Okay, but so if I'm a person who's coming to the restaurant, say I'm coming with my friend who, you know, uses a wheelchair. I might walk up the stairs in the front and that person would have to go around to the back?
No, so for the retail portion, there is two doors along the front here.
Oh, that are ground level.
Those are ground level that would serve the retail portion. The stairs is intended to be for residential only slash in an emergency situation of a flood. Then the retail would be able to egress right on through to get to this elevated point. So that's one of the requirements of dry floodproofing is that you have to have an elevated egress above the floodplain, at least one of them for, for fire safety to be able to come and go.
Okay, so the only, let me just make sure I'm clear. The only way though for accessible entry is an elevator. There is no ramp.
Not, not on this project um because part, partly to because there was a previous design. So the thought process was, well, we could do a ramp. If we were to do a ramp, how long of a ramp are we going to be looking at? And you're looking in the neighborhood of uh somewhere between sixty to eighty feet. And to facilitate that on this project is going to be a challenge. You would either have to look at taking up a lot of the um space along the front to be able to facilitate that ramp. Or we would have to look at somehow facilitating that in underneath the building, which then starts kind of creating this awkward pinch point between the ceiling and the ramp. So given the space constraints and where the design previously was at, because admittedly, the previous design got approval and it kept rolling forward towards construction, um, we wanted to minimize the amount of changes as much as possible to not impact seeker.
Okay, got it. Um, and then my last question, I forgot it. So I will try to remember it while I pass to Andy.
Okay, thanks, Bear. Thanks, Julia. I guess for me, you know, I understand that another board approved this, but I think the majority of the board now is new and for us, this really is a new project. So, you know, I respect, you know, your, your thought that, that this could be a fast thing. But, you know, for me, this is a brand new project. I'm seeing it for the first time.
Can I see a show of hands who's seen this before? Have all, are all three of you new to this project?
Yeah.
Okay, we do have Elizabeth, who's not here tonight, who has seen the project, but the majority, for your info, Bear, the majority of the board has not. Go ahead, Andy.
Right, right. So, I mean, I think this is a, you know, really amazing opportunity. This is really the gateway um in the West End waterfront district. So this is a really important building, you know, really important corner. So many people making their turn onto Buffalo from Meadow. So um, you know, this should be really great building. I guess one question I have and, and maybe, you know, these are questions you don't have to answer now, but could, you know, come out, you know, as time goes on. But uh first question is what is the sustainability story of the project? I didn't hear, you know, any mention of that, so it'd be good to hear, you know, what your goals are for sustainability. The second thing is um for affordability, could you be, you know, more specific? And again, it could be in another meeting. What do you mean by that? That, you know, that has so many different um, you know, definitions. Is it the entire building? You know, what, what types of people, you know, are you sort of targeting for this building, I think? And what support services, you know, would be required and where are those? In terms of the parking, um, the, this open parking in, in a really, you know, kind of downtown area kind of scares me. And part of the waterfront guidelines has to do with, you know, there shouldn't be open parking along a major street. So I know it's just a bay, you know, it's the entrance and then a bay. But then the rest of, you know, as you turn the corner next to the neighbor, this entire ground floor is open and this doesn't seem like a great neighborhood to provide this giant protected space. To me, this parking should be somehow screened and enclosed and not just kind of a, a giant breezeway. And it's huge, you know, it goes a whole block. In terms of accessibility, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may just jump in with the parking one, um, something to keep in mind while I'm happy to address those at the next meeting, but something to keep in mind is as a part of like floodplain requirements. If you enclose the space, if it, it becomes a little tricky because if you enclose the space, you have to be able to freely allow the passage of water in and out if it's going to be wet floodproofed, um, which is the only option that we're allowed for residential functions. We're not allowed to do dry floodproofing. So if we completely enclose that, then we have an issue of we need to elevate floor levels, different things like that. So it's just something to keep in consideration as to why we, why we didn't choose to make amendments to that open parking.
Yeah, totally understand that. I wasn't proposing, you know, a solid enclosure. You know, there's a million ways you could do something that was open that, that add, you know, allowed air infiltration and, you know, met your mechanical requirements and flood requirements, but still, you know, provided enclosure. And, you know, to follow up on Jenny's questions about accessibility, this just doesn't feel equitable. You know, looking at the design you had initially, and I know, you know, there's so many challenges with the floodplain. But I don't think adding, you know, just putting a stair, you know, a concrete stair there feels equitable. You know, again, you know, if, if, as Jenny, you know, told a story of arriving with a friend, whether you're going to the re- retail seems, you know, right at grade level, that's not an issue. But if you were visiting someone, you know, you're kind of pushed to the back of the building. You go through the garage and there's kind of a back door. I, I have to think there's a way you can solve this within the building. And I understand, you know, bringing, you know, people in a ground floor puts more pressure on you for the waterproofing. But there seems like there would be a way, a creative way to allow everybody to walk in at ground floor and then deal with the grade changes. For the, for the retail, I'm, you know, really sorry that you're, that you've raised the glass up. Maybe it's a cost issue, but again, are there other ways to treat that window so that it's not just this band of brick around the whole building? You know, could, could it be spandrel glass with, you know, masonry behind it or something that brings that retail down to the ground and doesn't feel like, you know, that window is, you know, sitting on, on bricks? And then lastly, there's this, it feels very barren. There's not a lot of landscape. And um, I, I see that you have some street trees, but is there a way to enlarge tree boxes or create something else to um, to just provide some relief to the site? And I, I know it's constrained, but um, just something, something to think out about. So those are the, my comments, and I know they're kind of large scale. But again, it's the first time I'm seeing the building and I think um, in terms of the expression of the building, I think it was more successful when you had that additional floor. It's, you know, very kind of horizontal and the, the difference between the ground floor and the kind of pancake layers on top. It's not, I don't know, something about the proportion feels a little squat because of all of this horizontal, horizontality that you're emphasizing. So, you know, sorry to give you so many comments, but again, this is the first time I'm seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I, I have seen it and I will admit to not looking closely at a lot of these, like the horizontality. You know, I've already sort of had, that was solved in my mind, so I was looking at other things. So I think it's valuable to have all these new perspectives. To that end, I think Bear, we should um, next time, like take a step back and do a bigger presentation.
Understood.
Yeah, just because I think a lot of questions are going to keep coming up. Yeah, I think that would be really helpful. Um, I'm going to go back and look at the old one as well and um, look forward to that presentation next time from you to hit some of these major, major questions. Specifically though, my feedback had to also do with the um, the accessible route at the back. In plan, I think it makes sense and I understand why you're doing it, but I also wanted to see if that route could be as nice as the other route and as equitable, if it has to be there. I think Andy's point is well taken that see if you can do it internally in the building in a different way. But otherwise, that's got to be a very well lit space with some features. It has to be very safe. Can't feel like it's right next to the parking. Maybe there's a second mural on that side because we, that's kind of a feature, I think, of this entrance still. Do we still have the mural?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so maybe there is a second mural on that side, so it's really one for one if, if that is the logistical solution for accessibility. Okay, let's talk about schedule. Jenny, go ahead.
Oh, I just, I was gonna, I remembered my other question. I was curious if all of the units are affordable or if it's mixed income units?
Julia, you might be able to jump in, but my understanding is all the units in this project are affordable as they were submitted as a part of the nine percent uh LITC, which is the low in, low income tax, uh housing tax credit through uh HCR with the state.
Okay, um, and then I also, you know, I just wanted to share another note on accessibility. Through my work, I often hear a lot about folks who have to access our own building coming through accessible options. And having only an elevator is really challenging, especially when you have folks, if the elevator isn't working, if the elevator has, has um, you know, has urine in it, has needle syringes in it. There is not then another available option for people to necessarily access the building. And so I think I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting that your building is going to be like littered with um syringes. And I actually think even as I sort of said this out loud, I think it drew a really unfortunate comparison around affordable housing that I'm really not trying to make. Um, I'm just sharing what I hear from folks in the public who do have accessibility concerns around getting in and out of apartment buildings and that sometimes having only the elevator as an option is not necessarily um the best way to go. Again, I'm really, yeah, I feel like I made a poor
No, point again.
There, and I hope that no one takes it that way. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, Lisa and Nikki, any thoughts as we move forward? We have the question of schedule and the amended neg deck.
And does more design related thought, and I don't know where this will go with um the other comments you've gotten, but I'm just looking at the south elevation on the street level side and that wall um right beside the sidewalk looks like it's probably eleven feet tall or something. That's a pretty, that's a south facing wall and that, that would be pretty brutal. Um, and part of this whole, you know, there have been other projects or at least one other project that had to deal with this, having to have a big wall. And then what do you do to soften it and make it a place that is also, you know, this is, you want this place to also be a place where people want to be and that feels comfortable. And um, yeah, that wall, it'd be great to sort of integrate something into that wall, whether it's landscaping, integrated landscaping or, or something to kind of make it not a giant wall right next to uh the sidewalk.
Anything else, Nikki?
No, not on design, just on the amended neg deck and schedule. I think for a minute neg deck, I think the big thing that we'd need to think about is that it's now in the one hundred year floodplain, which is a very impactful thing on, in seeker. So I'm throwing that out there, that that is a big thing that has changed. And then I think as schedule, we, as you know, Bear, we haven't had time to create one, but we will create one. And um, I unfortunately do not think it'll be as fast as you guys would hope it would be. Um, we of course will work with you to try to, as always, make it as fast as we can for the board to both review and make it the best project that they can. And um, you know, for you to respond to their comments. But we can have that definitely by, you know, before PRC of next month.
I mean, you're definitely out of the gates, you know, farther than any other brand new project. So I think you have that going for you. Go ahead, Max.
One more thing.
Please.
So, you know, I'm listening to everybody, which I always appreciate everybody's comments, uh, which really helps me think about this. I wanted to come back. I just had the question about the retail space seemed to uh big to me and, you know, I uh understand some of your reasoning, but it, it occurs to me that uh we could, or, or I would love to hear you rethink a little bit the retail space in conjunction with accessibility and the equitable accessibility of the, of the place. And you have two ground level entrances to the retail space. I think there's just room to kind of consider some of that uh in conjunction with, well, in terms of a couple of questions. One, the viability of resale spaces there at whatever size. And then secondly, the accessibility and, and its equitability uh in terms of accessing the building. And is there some way there's a, a compromise there that, that could um, could be accomplished?
Good points, okay. I think with that, we can look forward to seeing you next month. We have a lot to think about and, you know, I remember being very excited about this project and I think I still am. This is going to transform this corner, so we just have to um catch up our newer board members and make sure that we're doing diligence once again on this project. So thank you for walking us through it. We will see you next month.
I think it should be called Joe's, just to plug. But thank you, guys.
And for next month, we'll also um include the FIF from last time, so everyone can see that as well.
Okay, thank you, Bear. Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great one.
Okay, next we are looking at preliminary and final site plan approval for Grin spoon Halaic Cornell, seven two two University Avenue. Okay, we have Lisa and Sarah. Only, it's like a local Olive Garden. Yeah. Hello, gentlemen, and we have Sarah and Lisa?
Yes, hi.
And hello. Well, before you begin, I just want to say um, thank you for this project. We are so excited about it. We have seen it. We love it. We are prepared for a presentation, but I think we could vote without a presentation. So if you want to um, give us the highlights and, and keep it short, we're happy to do that as well. So over to your team. Thank you.
All right, I'll share screen and uh so we're passing around some material samples uh to take a look at, which I think is one of the only uh or, or one of the few new items that we have. I think the board has seen um, everything in the presentation package here today, previously.
The materials also were presented on August fifth, but we didn't have the baguette sample at that time. And I think Jacob has that.
You didn't bring them in your suitcase this time.
Yeah, they all broke, so that, that was a fail, a failed errand.
Well, with
Let's get back in.
Okay. With your request that we keep this short, I will skip the construction drawing package, which I, I don't think has changed um, from the previous meeting. Uh, we do have some updated uh renderings of the building to sort of compare and contrast with the material samples that you have in your hands. to sort of compare and contrast with the material samples that you have in your hands. Lisa, do you want to talk about these a little bit in relation to the materials?
Yeah, we updated the renderings to try to make the materiality look a little more like the samples that are in your hands. We had sort of abstractions before talking about the different volumes where the volume B is kind of a smooth textured terracotta and volume A is the one that has texture. The idea in terms of color, you know, we have a terracotta manufacturer that we are collaborating with that is producing samples, which is going to be an ongoing process probably all the way until we have a mockup. But the, the general idea is that we are looking for a fairly calm palette of sort of a cream color. And we're using the texture to differentiate the two volumes. The one volume A is where the Batte Madrasch is, the house of worship space that prominently projects, and then the background volume of volume B. So each view has been updated basically to get a little closer to what the actual material samples look like. We've also indicated where the signage. We have only just begun interviewing wayfinding and signage consultants. As you can imagine, there are a lot of donors that have been involved in this project to, you know, make it a reality. So many, many people have to be honored. And so just wanting to do that in a way that is not a crazy conjumble of conflicting messages, but you know, real clarity and elegance that, that go with the building. We, we are going to try to work very hard to keep within the limits of what's allowed in terms of square footage of signage. But again, that, that conversation is only beginning. I think everything else except for those, those updated renderings is the same as you've seen in the past.
Skip the photos of the materials since you have them in hand. I think the renderings probably do a better job than the elevations, but we have these here if you want to come back and talk about any of them. And then just the last new piece that Andy had requested at PRC is a quick look at the landscaping. And I would ask that you take these renderings with a grain of salt. They are not necessarily exact, exact representations, but they are the concept generally, that there are trees along the parking area on this slope. Generally, we're looking to select lighter leafed trees. So those would be gladiatias. So that they don't necessarily block the views, but that they do cast a nice dappled shade. And they contribute in the fall a nice yellow color. And then we do have one tree, which I think the artist rendering here might show a little bit more oak-like than what we're proposing. I think we're looking at like a river birch in the, in the bio swale area. So the rain garden. So again, looking down and again, take this with a grain of salt. I don't think the lawn is quite that big, but generally just trying to give you a concept of how the, the landscape sits in relation to the building mass. That's all we have for a presentation. There's obviously a lot of slides here. Happy to talk about any of them, but I understand wanting to keep this short.
Wonderful. Thank you all. I will say that this project is one I think we're all super excited by. And I'm going to start walking up the hill and watching construction because it's really beautiful. Conceptually, it hits the mark and functionally, it's just well thought out. So thank you for bringing it to us. Thank you for these updated images. I think it really does capture what you've been speaking to all along. Let's go around the board for any outstanding questions or comments. Andy?
Thanks, everyone, for the presentation. I agree with Emily. I think this is going to be one of the most stunning buildings on the Cornell campus. I think it's really just beautiful. And just to clarify, the, the sample that we saw of the, the glazing that looks like stone, is that, would that be on the base? Is that what we're seeing sort of under the, the seating terrace?
Yes. Yes. And I don't think that sample had been shared previously. It actually came in today.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think that's just going to add, you know, another level of sophistication to the building. And I was, you know, diving into the, to the rain garden. I'm so glad that you provided these, you know, additional renderings. It's very helpful. And I really love what you're doing with, you know, most of the plantings in the rain garden. There's so many. It was so exciting just to see all the different species in variety and color. And then this beautiful river birch will be the, you know, sort of marquee tree there. I think it's a great design. So yeah, just think it's a beautiful building. Thank you.
Jenny?
Thanks. I also think it's really lovely. You know, just one thought, if you're interested, the Lab of Ornithology had lots and lots of donors. They also struggled with this problem. And so if you're looking for a place to look at how they managed signage with many donors, that could be one worth checking out. It's another beautiful building up at Cornell. Just a little food for thought, but thank you.
And Max?
I, I am with Emily. I want to go up there and see the construction of this. I'll be following it. I don't have anything to add. Congratulations on a great project.
Thanks.
Thank you. Lisa and Nikki, any outstanding issues or thoughts? Okay. Well, with that, why don't we take a look at this yellow sheet? We are looking at preliminary and final approval tonight for Grin spoon Hillel Center for Jewish Community at Cornell. Can I have a motion to open the proposed section? Andy moves. Jenny seconds. And do we have any discussion on the items? Let's just take a moment to review. I think we've seen all the materials, so there's no outstanding items. We'll see a signage package once they get to it. Okay. Any revisions or questions on this? Okay, seeing none. Let's do a roll call vote. Andy?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Max?
Yes.
I am also a yes. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Preliminary and final. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Great news.
Thank you very much. And I just introduce myself. I'm Rabbi Ari Weiss. I'm the CEO of Grin spoon Hillel. I've been on the video many times. And I'll just say, we will have video feed of the construction. So you'll be actually, you'll be able to walk by it, but also see it at our website. But thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yes, cranes, cranes and diggers, right? Okay, next up, we're looking at a sign review for Kegu Park, formerly Carpenter Circle Project. So I assume we will keep you, Jacob. Okay. We are looking at potential sign package changes approval. And Sam, who said who is? And Paul is online. Okay.
All right. So back again for signs for Kegu Park. We had final approval for signs from the board previously. We required variances, so we went to BZA. They agreed with some of the signs and have approved the blade signs on the, on the two buildings and the primary monument sign at the fifth street extension. However, they did not approve the secondary monumental entrance sign, third street entrance. And they did not approve the, the wayfinding signage that's internal to the site, pointing to the various elements of the site. So there were specific reasons why they objected to those. We can certainly go into those. Generally, I think it came down to the, the height of those wayfinding signs. In particular, the, the signage code allows only for a certain height. I think it's like three feet or directional signage, which is how they were described. And so what had been proposed for these sort of tall flag signs, I think most of you will probably remember those, which were, you know, over, over set. So a variance of that scale seems a lot more substantial. So we're back with revised wayfinding signs. We are no longer looking at the secondary monument sign. We sort of rolled that into the wayfinding signage. So it's part of that same family throughout the site. And let's take a look at those. We have some quick photo mockups of each of these in their location. So this, this was the location of that secondary monument sign. Obviously, this is a much scaled down wayfinding signage, right? It's, it's just directional arrows, not meant to be viewed at that scale. Moving through the site, so at each intersection in the bump outs, locations where we don't believe there are any visual obstructions or hazards to pedestrians, right? There's no crosswalk here where this might be a potential safety issue. So each of these signs has been reduced in scale. There is one where we're looking at a L shaped form as opposed to simply a two sided sign. It sort of has four sides, but they're connected. And that's sort of at the main four, four way intersection at the center where the apartment to the right and the, the fifth street extension connection to the left. Just a quick look at what that L shape looks like, zoomed in. And then another along the Kegu Park lane, just double sided. And then we didn't have a photo that made sense for this location because it's an active construction site. It was a little rough. So we, we took board members' advice and dropped this into the rendering. So you see the large approved sign at the entrance and the much scaled down wayfinding sign at the intersection. So we have detailed dimensions for each of these in the submission package. They're all more or less the same family and size. So I don't, I don't have the means to go through them in detail. And then we have the locations mapped out. Happy to talk about any of these. It's interesting. We would still need a return to the BZA. If and when the board grants approval for these, we would go back to the BZA. Hopefully they would accept these, what they rejected.
Okay. Thank you. Very easy to understand presentation. Thank you. Okay, Andy, thoughts and comments?
Yeah, I think it's very, very straightforward. I think maybe the, the only challenge I could see, you know, in your, in your photo montage is, you know, some of the signs are on lawn, some are in landscape beds. And just making sure that, you know, in the landscape bed that the, you know, the plantings don't grow such that it's blocking the sign because, because now these are, you know, really small. That would be my only, you know, concern, but otherwise I think it's very straightforward.
Great. Thank you. Jenny?
Thanks. So there's one, two, three, four total?
Five.
Five total? It, only one over there. Okay. I guess I'm, the, the three in the middle there, like, are those meaningfully different?
Yeah, so they're, they're each at an intersection. So they're located at decision points, right, where you sort of decide whether to turn right or left. And those decisions change as you make your way down the drive.
Okay.
Each intersection has a different, serves different purposes.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think these look tasteful enough. I found the L shaped one like very confusing. I don't, I just, I think if you were driving down the road and you had an L shaped sign that had arrows going all those different directions, like you'd basically have to stop your car, I think, to look at it to figure out which arrows you're, you're going to. But there's probably also folks who look at the behavioral science of sign reading and would say that this is fine.
Paul is the, the sign specialist. Paul, I don't know if your audio is working.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, we, we did look into this, but there is, there's a real crossroads at this particular point. And we played around with a couple of ideas and you can't sort of, a diagonal, single face sign wouldn't work. And the right angles in one direction wouldn't work. We actually played around the, doing a little cube, but we're trying to be as discreet as possible. So we thought the L shape was the best, best solution.
Okay, sounds good. That's it for me. Thanks, Jenny. Max?
Just one question of clarification. So what you're presenting to us is resized based on feedback you got from the zoning board. And then they still haven't accepted it, but that's, you'll go back with our, with whatever opinion we render to them and say, and then try to get approved, correct?
That's right.
Okay, great.
That's correct.
Thank you. I, I didn't have.
And this reflects the guidance almost exactly. So we're hoping that your board will see, see the merit of their thought process. And we've basically just translated what they asked for.
Yeah, great. I think these are effective. And I don't have any more comments.
Okay. I also think these are very effective and seem appropriate. You know, I assume that if the L shaped sign, I think it's very clever actually. And if the L shaped sign doesn't work and there are car crashes, the owners would amend the sign. So I think that'll work itself out. Yeah. You're near the medical center either way. No, I, I really, I think this is a good package for a very large site. Hopefully, yeah, it works well. I think it, it seems to do the trick. So Nikki and Lisa, any thoughts on this? No. So I hear a very positive consensus. We do have a potential approval here. So why don't we, I can ask for a motion in a second and then we can discuss. Andy moves. Jenny seconds. Okay. As it's written, any thoughts, anything to add?
Since we're preceding the Board of Zoning, is there anything that has to be mentioned about that in here or not?
No, I don't think so. Okay, so I'm seeing none. So why don't we go ahead and take a roll call vote on the resolution for signage design approval? Andy?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Max?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. You've done it.
Yeah.
Done it again. Good luck.
Your last time at BZA for a sign.
That's true. Good luck with the BZA. Thank you for bringing it to us. And I think it's, it's a great design.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so tonight we will not be seeing 445 East State Street. They are going to wait, as Nikki said, for the sign ordinance approval to come back to us. So next up is director's report. Lisa?
I'll send it by email to you. If you're interested, there's a $75 registration fee and the city would be very happy to pay for that for you if you're interested in going to it. It's all day. It brings together municipal decision makers and developers. So I'll send it around and if you'd like to go, please tell me and we can.
Did you say where it's located?
It's in Binghamton.
Binghamton, okay. Yes, let's take a look. Thank you for that opportunity.
Yes.
That's all. That's it. Okay, short report. Then we have Old New Business and we're going to talk about draft site plan approval ordinance and the draft sign ordinance.
Okay, and thanks for reviewing them, everyone. So I think the memo basically plots that out, like why we are looking at the site plan review ordinance again and reviewing a lot of like simpler language and ways to. and reviewing um a lot of like simpler language and ways to eat, um, you know, like there are specific titles. And so we got rid of those because titles change or specific commissions or boards and got rid of those. Um, well, I should say the lawyers did. Um, and then I think the very, the big substantial change is changing the threshold for limited site plan review. That's a staff level review and changing it from that to, to the duplex, the two-family, two fourteen units. Um, Emily had a great question of why fourteen. Uh, a few reasons, one being that at fifteen, it bumps it to a type one under seeker. And so that would require, yeah, the full thief, all people thieves. Um, and then also, as other cities and towns in the US are, um, that missing middle is really important. And hopefully, like, this would be some incentive to developers to, if they, we give them precisely what we need, they can give us an application with everything we need to review and have, you know, a shorter process, if not shorter, at least. Um, you know, not as expensive too, or, yeah. So that's the nutshell, but I am here, Lisa's here, Sam to answer any questions or.
Yeah, do we want to have any discussion now about it or questions now?
I think it makes sense, I mean, clearly it's adding to your workload, but it, but to your point Nikki, to streamline the process. Um, I think it's a great idea.
And to clarify, um, at any point, this could be kicked up to the board, right?
Yeah, any, any limited site plan can be.
Great, so if an applicant doesn't give you exactly what you're asking for, you could kick it up or if there's a question. So it doesn't preclude us from being involved, I think it just, like you said, it takes away a barrier for um maybe faster and less expensive review.
Great, I think we talked, when I went to that um training that the county put on, they talked a lot about sort of the missing, the missing middle. And I think even visually, as you move around Ithaca, you see that that is missing. And you hear it anecdotally from people who don't necessarily want to have a unit in a, you know, hundred and twenty unit building, but they would happily have the second floor of like a, you know, six-unit, three-story condo-style house. Um, so I think that's great.
And we haven't had many at the board, you said, right?
No, I looked through and we, granted, we just now, um thankfully, Sam will show you at some point the pipeline, which is amazing, that he created the dashboard for our housing pipeline. But um, in looking at that data before, we had it all consolidated. I was counting approximately six, six projects in the last five years that were between more than two units and less than fifteen. And you guys saw two of them recently, the state and the Highlands, six and one state, Highlands. So that's not many, I mean, we can look at the data now and it might be a little more refined, but.
Thank you.
Uh, ju- just one question and then a comment. Um, so the um, I read this, now I can't remember exactly how it goes, but um if there's a dispute with the staff or with the director, they can request to kick it up to us, right?
Basically, the, the general standard for staff level review is that the staff isn't making any discretionary decisions. So um it would be like, it meets all of the standards, the design guidelines, or it doesn't. So if we, and we, you know, we, Nikki does this and I did this before, go back and forth all the time with applicants applying for limited site plan review on the changes we would need for it to comply. And so it would have, the standard would be, it would need to comply with all of the standards or it would go, if, that we couldn't work that out, then it would go to the board, who is allowed to make discretionary decisions about designs.
Oh, that's great, that's, that's good, that's, that's very helpful. Uh, so I, I was wrong, I had two questions and then a comment. I've been forgetting things lately, I'm old, I forget. But um, the other, the other question was uh about the exchange that uh you two had about the um fee structure. And then your last comment about, well, that the city's trying to take that all out of the ordinances and put it in, you know, on the web, so it's up to date and everything. Makes perfect sense to me, why, why won't that happen at this point?
That's a good question.
Wouldn't this be the opportunity?
That's the question we have to the attorneys.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna request that.
Yeah, we can ask again, but the reason for us, because they want to do that like all at once.
Yeah, but we, yeah, we have an opportunity to do one now, so.
Yeah, it seems.
So that might be.
You know, why not?
Watch the common council meeting.
Yeah. Um, so that was the second question. Then the other thing is, I think uh back to Jenny's point about the kind of the missing middle and all this and anything uh that the city can do to kind of speed up and streamline approval processes. I mean, it's just like really good. And I think the other thing, I think that it's really reflects well on the city of Ithaca that it's reviewing these ordinances with these kinds of points in mind, because that's just good government. And I think, I think that's really, so as a citizen, I compliment the city on that, yeah.
Thank you.
That's great, good feedback.
Also, is, you know, following on um what Max is saying, is there a way to sort of highlight these projects? Because, you know, I walk by sites all the time and think, wow, this could be, you know, fifteen units or how, you know, this could be a bigger development. Is there a way to, you know, provide something that would, you know, spark a developer to think, huh? You know, maybe I could get interested in the scale.
That's really interesting. And I mean, one of the things that we're gonna do in the zoning rewrite is try to remove any zoning barriers. There are some, they're not huge, but there are some. Um, and then we're looking into what we want to study this coming year for housing. Um, and that would be one of the things, how would you, how do you incentivize this missing piece of housing?
So this is sort of related, um, and I'm curious, we just had a zoning um change to allow ADUs. Right, so have you seen a flood of ADUs proposed? No, so it's, to speak to your point, how do you incentivize that? Now the law is more flexible, but you're not seeing people build it, so I don't know.
Great. Anyway. And there's some ideas for that as well, too, yeah.
Yes, there's ideas for that, like, would you like to say what you're doing with that? Or Sam, would you like to say what you're doing to incentivize ADUs?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, we're, right now, we're looking into bringing in through some pre-approved packages for ADUs, including um construction drawings, so they'll be permit-ready construction sets, people to take to their um, uh developer, whoever that may be. So um, we're in talks about what shape that might look in, whether the city buy them for free or not, or if people have to purchase them um for, for a smaller price than what's typical for lands.
And they could circumvent some of the process.
Yes.
Yeah.
Automatic.
Automatically approved, yeah.
So we got a.
Typical like city of Eugene has a fee on that we can, we can have and maybe even make, you know, a little more to the locale, but.
So they make it free to citizens?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yep, there's one.
Right, we got a small grant from the county and we had, we got a capital project last year, a small amount of money to look into this. So there is funding to either, you know, to hire a consultant to do the designs or. Yeah.
Great.
And then along with that, you know, you could have, you know, a menu of architects that you could hire that do this as well.
That's exactly, yep, that's exactly where we're going. Yep, and have those be used, some of the pre-approved, depending on.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, um, do we want to transition into the draft sign ordinance?
Oh, I just want to say, um, we are bringing this to council in November, so it would be great if the board had a recommendation to council to, to.
Oh, we could do that tonight.
Do a recommendation, or if you had any changes you want to make, we wanted to bring it to you first because it impacts obviously your work, but.
Do you want um an endorsement tonight or do you want us to circulate thoughts?
Either way, it would be great to um for them to have your opinion on this.
Let's do it now, I mean, I'm hearing all kind of consensus. Shall I just sum up what we all said? Um, so this, uh, we agree with the proposed draft ordinance. Um, it will remove the barrier to um local developers, both a timeline barrier and monetary barrier and hopefully promote that missing middle size of development. Do we want to say anything else? Great, wow.
Thank you.
First try, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do the same with the draft sign ordinance.
Okay, um, and I think this is a good example tonight of a lot of the back and forth that applicants have had to do in the past, in the way that the ordinances are written, right? Like, first I have to come here because it's part of site plan review of um whether you approve it or not and then to them if there's any variance. So for, for efficiency, it was thought that it could be called waivers, signed waivers, and that when they come here for approval, however long that takes, um, they can also get that waiver here and not have to be sent um to the BZA. Not, we like the BZA, that's not the point, but just to save, to save time as well. It also, because it does have a lot to do, as you guys have noted over and over, with design, with the context of the neighborhood, with um, you know, some of the, some of the things that are in the ordinance, like do that, does it really uh match with what's out there? Like a huge building, should it only have the twelve-square-foot sign if it's residential? So there's some of those more, um, some of those questions you can answer better than with the BZA just because they have to go by that five-point criteria that they have to always go by, so. Um, you, it would still be um the fact that the zoning administrator would still look at it and tell us how they're out of compliance with the ordinance, like, there's too many signs, there's, you know, they went over by this much square footage, so you'll still have that write-up as well.
But you, you would make the decision about what is the appropriate amount and size of signage along with all the aesthetic considerations.
Yep, yep. Um, and Emily smartly asked me, did we have any training with this then? And I was like, that's the next on the agenda, but we would propose that training that we had talked about, hopefully in January, of doing a training, you know, about signs, like looking at our design guidelines again, looking at the ordinance, um, looking at some examples of successful and then some not as successful signs and why, um, and in which parts of our city that they make sense.
I would love that training because I think personally I'm often leaning on the BZA to make a call on size. Like, we give our input, it feels too big, but now I would just like to be able to give more direct feedback to them and.
Be easier for them.
Easier.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have something to point to, like, actually, it says here that the size is this, so it takes a little bit of the subjectivity.
Yes.
Out of it. I feel like I'm often just providing really subjective feedback when it comes to signs and there's probably a better way to do that.
Right, yeah, that's a, that's a good, good point, although probably still will have some of that, but yes. Um, and, and I think the really, a, a good point to that, Jenny, too, is in section four. If you see, it's nice, it says, and shall also consider the following, you guys probably all saw that, but you know, size of sign, size of the building kind of explains that, other signs, yeah. So it lays out that criteria really nice, too, with the design guidelines. I think that could, yeah, make it a little less maybe subjective.
So the, whether the um signs are within the guidelines, who, who makes that determination?
Zoning administrator.
Administrator.
Oh, not the guidelines, but the ordinance.
I mean, no, excuse me, that's what I.
Yes, yes, exactly, yeah.
Administrator, not the board.
She or they, well, um, well, right, they will write up exactly, like, if there's, if there are any variances for a project, they write up, um, you know, zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so.
Analysis, so. Is acceptable. Yeah. Yeah. Right.
Got it, yeah, so.
So you. Yep.
Right, so the information would be like a report to us.
Yes, so she would say, Max, you have three signs, you're allowed two. You know, you know, there's supposed to be fifty square feet, this one's eighty square feet, this one's, yeah, they'll tell you exactly how it's not following.
That's what Jenny was talking about, yeah, I get it, yeah.
We can, we have more cover kind of to say, you know what, they're, the guy, these guidelines are here for a reason and this exceeds it and so.
That's the waiver, but you'll also pair it with your, your, right before that, your approval of that sign package, so, yeah.
Yeah, kind of, no, go ahead.
Let's say if we did not grant a waiver on something specific, that's the end of it. It, it does not get appealed to BZA, right? It's just, that's it.
And it makes sense.
BZA grants two kinds of grants, area of variances and use cases. It's really, right, either.
Variance, yeah.
So it's, so it's, there's, there are regulations about how these things can be, but it makes sense to consider the size in the whole package of everything else, so. Yes, you, I would imagine like with any applicant, what, what BZA can negotiate, you can just make a decision based on the criteria. You can have a discussion with, you know, if you have more ability to go back and forth with the applicant to reach and negotiate.
Yeah. So it'd be a similar process, it could extend over several meetings, they come back, negotiate, okay.
Yeah, I was just saying, you know, what Sam provided when we were reviewing zoning um ordinances, we, you know, with variances, I'm sorry, um, that was really helpful. Cause it made it really clear, this is what we're focusing on, this is what, you know, is not meeting the, the zoning code. And so we'll have that.
Yes, yep.
As a guide, it was really helpful.
Yep. Yeah, and I think in the training, we'll touch upon that a little bit too, just to get, so you know some of the background of it too. But you'll always have a written out, this is how it's not meeting the guidelines, yeah.
I think it makes a lot of sense. That means taking down this barrier again for applicants. I, you can feel the frustration more with signs than any other process, I think.
I think so.
Now I have to go to the BZA, okay. So that's great to streamline the process. Do you want something, uh, a recommendation for us on this as well?
That would be fantastic.
All right, I'll try to do it.
Drumroll.
Um, okay, so the same things, we support the uh, the draft sign ordinance as a board um in order to remove barriers from applicants, both the timeline and monetary, to streamline the process with one board.
Yeah, excellent.
It more, we don't have to write this, but it more directly um allows us to more directly get at, I think, the goals of the sign ordinance itself. Okay, sound good?
And I get you recorded so I can.
You can add that as well, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we need to look at November and December meeting dates because they're near holidays.
So wondering, um, oh, and I should mention for November, we will have a new board member. Um, Peggy Toley, who is um trained as a landscape architect. She worked at the city as a sidewalk coordinator and now works at Cornell. And I think is gonna be an excellent board member, just period, but also very um interested in outside of the building and the site area. So like the sidewalk and, yeah, yep, so she'll be joining us in November.
Great. So one seat beyond that, okay.
We're moving on to that, too. So November, we just wanted to throw out there, um, the planning board meeting as scheduled is that Tuesday before Thanksgiving, Tuesday the twenty-fifth. And we just want to see if there's any appetite or any, you know, desire to move it to an earlier date if people had travel plans, like even on that Monday or, you know, some night the week before. But that is all, that is up to you all.
I'm fine with myself, I'm fine with the twenty-fifth, I would be fine with the twenty-fourth as well, if it's better.
Yeah, I'm the same with me, twenty-fourth is fine, twenty-fifth is fine.
Same.
Yeah, I'm okay too.
So it would be nice to, to have everybody, if we can have Peggy and
Yeah.
Um, Elizabeth, to have a full board next time.
Yeah, so check in with them.
Maybe send an email.
Check in with them and then make it a, a definitive answer, yeah.
We all sound pretty.
This week, and then we can trade it on the calendar.
And that, that training is on the eighteenth, Lisa?
Yes, that's.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't want to be, you don't want to go into training and then have a planning board?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm actually out of town that day, so I can't do either, unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah. No, we'll keep it to twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, it sounds like, that's, yeah, okay. All right, thank you. And then December, moving on.
That's December twenty-third.
Yes, we all, we often, I'm, uh, every year that I've been here anyway, we make it the Tuesday before, we make it the third Tuesday.
Oh. The sixteenth?
Yes, so I just wanted to see if that was all right with people. Fine by me.
Works.
I think I can do that.
Very minimal, thank you. Okay, we will make that change on the calendar, on the website and send that out to you all and, great, thank you.
Okay, um, do we want to talk about retreat dates?
Now that we have our calendars out.
That we have our calendars, um.
We're thinking January twenty-twenty-six, but that is. Put to you all as well. Yeah.
So it would be a different Tuesday or it could be any day?
Any day. Yeah.
Right. What out, are we thinking eve- evening? Still? Like after work, okay.
Are you, did you suggest some specific dates yet?
I haven't, I have not suggested, um, I, I would think though sometime in the end of January. Yeah, nineteenth.
So that, that part of that week I'm gone.
Okay.
But the latter part of the week I'm.
Same. Um, I can do the second half of the week of the night.
Yeah, the nineteenth is MLK.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe twenty-one, twenty-two. I mean, I could do twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two or twenty-three.
Is twenty-one on or is it twenty-two on?
Uh, uh, twenty-one, uh, I could do, but it will be difficult for me.
Yeah, no, we don't want you to, but twenty-two.
It's, it's comfortable, that's.
Is it Thursday, yeah.
It's a Thursday.
Yeah.
That would be one, twenty-two. Maybe we could get a second date and then put it to the two others?
Yep, the last week is the.
We do have the twenty-seventh.
Right. Yeah, or the first week of February.
Either the latter parts of, or any, any. Time that, um, week of the second, uh, works for me and then the latter part of the week before is fine too.
Yeah, I have nothing, guys, I'm not a busy person.
It's just too far in advance.
Yeah.
You are a busy person.
How does that first week of February, like on the, um, February third, which is a Tuesday, does that work for? We would not want it to Groundhog Day, cause we don't want to create ourselves.
I have, I could not do the third.
Okay.
But I could do, sorry.
No.
Could do the fourth or the fifth.
Or the fifth. Fifth, so what about the fifth for people?
Yeah.
Those are the Thursdays, yeah? Okay.
The one twenty-two or two-five?
Yeah. That sound? All right, and these will not be as long as planning board meetings in, in days past. We'll make them succinct, two hours. Yep, yeah.
I'm happy to host again if that's appropriate, okay.
Appropriate, it's very nice.
It was fun.
It was fun, yeah. Okay, so I will send that out. I'll include all of you two, um, and I know your answers, but, you know. So that, for January twenty-second or February fifth. Thank you.
Okay, I think that does it. Um, final thoughts, anybody? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? Andy moves and Jenny seconds. Thank you, everyone, we are adjourned tonight.